We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Terry, first, can you confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you'd please call roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Zer?
Here.
Commissioner Becca?
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Farrar?
Here.
At this time, those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
This up is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Our agenda is adopted. We'll now move on to our recognitions. For our first one tonight, I will turn it over to Dr. Becca.
So Commissioner Lyons and I had the pleasure of interviewing students at Memorial High School and North High School to serve as student representatives to the school board for next year. Just so everyone is aware, we will recruit for Eau Claire Virtual School and McKinley Charter School closer to the start of the fall semester. So we welcome two new student representatives from North and from Memorial. And I'll speak first to Sarah Lester, who's our new representative from Memorial. Would you mind standing? Sarah's attended Eau Claire schools since kindergarten, first at Putnam, then at DeLonge, and now at Memorial where she's currently, or she's going to be. She is currently a junior. Sarah enjoys classes in math and science, and she's looking forward to hopefully a career in medicine. At Memorial, her favorite extracurriculars are soccer, student council, and eco warriors. In her free time, Sarah enjoys hanging out with friends, going to the gym, and the outdoors. Sarah hopes to use the student representative position to voice the opinions and ideas of her peers, as well as work to make schools a more welcoming and comfortable place for all students. Simply stated, Sarah hopes to have a positive impact on future opportunities for students, teachers, and everyone in Eau Claire schools. Welcome, Sarah.
And I have the pleasure of introducing Caitlin Wiesenbeck. Caitlin Wiesenbeck is an incoming junior at North High School who hopes to bring equity and a more diverse perspective to the board. She is the proud co-founder of the Mental Health and Equality Club at North Star Middle School and North High School called Open Door, which centers around providing an open space for children in need to find a safe, honest, and supportive environment where kids can share their thoughts, feelings, and opinions in a healthy and encouraging manner. She strives to make North an inclusive and culturally diverse atmosphere, and is ready and willing to put in the work to do so. She is excited and extremely grateful for the opportunity and ready to represent the school with pride. And it's a pleasure to have you, Caitlin.
It's great to welcome both of you to the role, and we look forward to having you back up here in front with us when the school year begins in September. So thank you for being here tonight. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for the remainder of our recognitions.
Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members, executive staff, and guests tonight. We've got some, the first one is positive news from Sam Davie Elementary School. Sam Davie Elementary School has many positive reflections of the current school year. Our students and staff have done a great job of turning challenges into opportunities. The growth that our students experience is the result of the great efforts and collaboration from our students, staff, and families. There are many examples of the positive happenings at Sam Davie, and tonight I'd like to illustrate one. First grade students needed time to adjust this school year after spending much of their kindergarten experience trying to learn in an online format and being in person only two days a week through most of the previous school year. Isaac is a great example of how our students respond when provided additional support as they transition to being in school five days per week with full classrooms. By utilizing our system of support, including individual and small group work with student achievement specialists, purposeful people activities as part of our social emotional learning, PPIS supports, including check-in and out, and dolphin lunches and additional GSA support that allowed our teachers to provide effective target time and interventions, Isaac's reading star assessment rose to high proficiency with an 81% student growth percentile. His teacher attributed those supports that aided in Isaac's growth. The support provided by additional staff is truly what made the difference. This is how I would provide differentiated instruction to support all students and give them the teacher time they all truly deserve. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Jill Eisenhoof up to accept this certificate for Sam Davie. Two more recognitions this evening. With LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, the ECASD is proud to recognize June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, which commemorates the 1969 Stonewall riots. We, as a district, honor the impact that these individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally. And finally, Juneteenth, June 19th. The Eau Claire Area School District also recognizes Juneteenth, which is celebrated on June 19th and commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. That's it for recognitions.
At this time, we'll move on to our public forum. The forum provides up to four minutes for each person who has signed up for public comment. I will, with regret, interrupt you at four minutes. Additionally, the board does not hear personal complaints of any school personnel or any individual associated with the school district. As you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Our first speaker tonight is Lori Plackey Worth.
My name is Lori Plackey Worth. I reside at 2229 Chilium Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Many of you will be relieved to know this will be shorter than usual. I do know full well what's on the agenda for tonight, and I also know full well the truth, which cannot be ignored or disallowed for long. Truth will certainly lead to conviction sooner or later, as it always does. More and more are beginning to see what is going on, knowing the truth. It shall set this community and our children free from the current tyranny.
Thank you. Next up is Jim Schumacher.
Hi, and thank you for your service. I'm Jim Schumacher. I live at 621 Marston Avenue. And although I am a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee for the city, I don't speak for the committee. But I am here to keep on your radar renewable clean energy. We're in that revolution right now, no turning back. And we have a climate emergency. I'm not going to pull any punches on that issue. So I would like to encourage the board to continue to support clean energy, continue what was started on the rooftops of both of the high schools, which I understand will save over their lifetime and perhaps beyond, but for the 25-year lifetime of solar panels, nearly half a million dollars. And I think that savings will only go up as similar to memory storage in computer chips, the same thing is happening with solar panels insofar as efficiency size, sizes reducing and efficiency is going up. So either invest in panels on the schools, as the school rooftops seem to suggest they would be good sites, or put panels or any other kind of clean, renewable, carbon-free renewable energy. Had a brief conversation with Jemez Staples. I'm aware of his program out of Minneapolis on a nationally syndicated program, television, radio syndicated program. And what he did at his alma mater, North High School in North Minneapolis, was put solar panels on that school and began a, his chief executive officer of a Clean Energy Revol-, or I'm sorry, the, well, he's CEO of the program, Renewable Energy Partners, I'm sorry about that. Brief conversation with him, and what he has done, there's been an option in which the solar gardens on rooftops, which has expanded beyond his alma mater of North High Schools in Minneapolis, to solar gardens where subscriptions are sold, not unlike the solar garden that Xcel Energy has out on Sky Park. And in fact, Xcel Energy is the provider of, is the primary power company in Minneapolis as it is here. So his focus was on low-income folks, the first people that he would, his company would sell shares in solar panels, and it didn't require upfront investment. Typically, prevents people of low income from getting into solar renewable energy because of the initial investment and saving money over time, whereas no investment is required here. Another attractive part is students can get involved in actually learning, learning high school and technical college credits. And many of them can be already employable upon graduation from high school if they choose not to go on for post-secondary training programs in the field of renewable energy. This is a growth.
Sorry, Mr. Schumacher, that's your time.
Quickly it goes.
No, I was thinking, if you, I would encourage you to send those resources into the board via email so that we can take a look.
Thank you for your time and again, your service.
Our next speaker is Mark Goings.
My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450 County Road V, Augusta. And one of the agenda topics here tonight is talking about the referendum. And as a school board, choosing when or what? That's one of the biggest things that you will ever decide. And you are representing the community as you do that. And one of the things I don't know that our community fully understands is that we are currently funded at the bottom third of the state. I think that is a dramatic, a dramatic example of our system and how our system is failing us. It was just a few years ago, I was talking about, of our previous referendum, our need to dream big. And in reality, what happened is we passed a referendum to keep the lights on. I believe it was only for one year that we were above the state average, and we have systematically gone below that and farther and farther. And so as you're thinking about what it is, besides when you talk about the referendum itself, think about this last year when we talked about our OEs or the different goals of this and that of how we're doing as a district. I'd like to commend, first of all, our exec team and Superintendent Johnson for when they came and spoke, think about, we are funded in the bottom third. So one of the things I'd like you to do as a general thing going forward is whenever a presentation comes, have a question there of, if we were at the 60th percentile, what could we be doing? And ask that of every, all of the different topics. Because we have been underfunded as a system for so long that we have so many needs and so many things that we have just decided we can't do. And so when you will talk tonight about some of our building needs, think about, you know, what does, what does lack of space mean at an elementary? Perhaps it means that resource rooms are compacted. Well, think about that through the eyes of that child who needs that resource. And they are some of the most, students of need that we have, and we are compacting them. Or think about our high schools where we may have places where we could or should be investing in either the infrastructure or in electives, or the fact that our increment study is about a decade overdue because it keeps getting delayed because of lack of funds. And so one thought I had about this, and I know we can't do this in any one referendum, but I started teaching here about 27 years ago. My first class had 19 students. If I was at that same building teaching that same level this year, I'd have over 30. Think about for those students, what does large class size mean to that student? How many times does that student get to raise their hand and get responded to? Or think about the field trips that we used to do that we can no longer do because of lack of funding. So as a system, our system should be commended for being able to do what we have been able to do, but we have so many needs.
Sorry, Mr. Goings, that's your time.
Thank you very much.
That concludes tonight's public forum. We'll now move on to our reports for the evening. We'll start, as always, with the Budget Development Committee and Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you, President Nordine. Budget Development last met on May 25th. We began by a discussion on the edits for GC5 and did some wordsmithing of a couple of different versions. Those edits will be coming to you, President Nordine, through agenda setting so it can come to the floor. Budget Development also was taking care of some odds and ends, including some questions on HVAC, five-year budget projections, ESAR funds, and extended conversation on grants and grant rating. But the majority of our meeting really was in preparation for what you're going to hear tonight. We took a look at quite a bit of facility information, including demo trends recommendations and a lot from the architectural report. And what you'll see in the presentation tonight is a little bit of an amalgamation of the conversations we had at the last meeting, but all of the meetings previously. So you're going to see a whole number of slides in things that, in meetings that Budget Development's had over the last couple of months. So hoping that it's very informative, it can get you caught up to speed on our work, and that you can give us some direction as a floor. End of report.
Thank you. And we'll now move on to our Legislative Liaison. Dr. Johnson?
The committee members for the 2022 Legislative Council Study Committee on Shared School District Services have been announced. The study committee is directed to review current barriers to shared administrative or other services between school districts and explore statutory changes or creations of incentives to encourage efficiencies. The committee shall consider methods for sharing or consolidating services such as district-level administration and personnel, purchasing technology and data processing, transportation, food service, and build-it maintenance, and make recommendations for the legislature. In the wake of the tragic school shooting in Texas, the United States Department of Education previously published guidance about how ESAR III funds may be used to prevent and respond to crime and promote public safety within school districts. On May 3rd, the Department of Public Instruction received confirmation that the U.S. Department of Education has granted final approval of Wisconsin's ESAR III plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an additional report tonight on our recent coherent governance training. For that, I'll turn it to Dr. Farrar.
Thank you. Commissioner Nordine, Terry Grisb, and I attended a training in Sun Prairie led by Linda Dawson and Randy Quinn on May 17th. It was a great opportunity to meet with school board members and superintendents from around the state who are also in the process of adopting a coherent governance structure. Training focused on the distinct roles of the superintendent and school board, creating effective policy language focused on student results, and methods of communication between the board and community constituencies. So it was very useful training, and hopefully we can take some of that to improve some of our own processes.
And I'll just add in that we did make, we were able to start making some connections with others, as you mentioned, that are using coherent governance. And so I know, like Commissioners, I've already sent, you'd already asked for a couple of connections, and those are able to help us develop as well. At this time, we'll move on to our consent agendas. For each of the consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. Items on the consent agendas have either been discussed at a previous meeting or has received background information. Tonight's Superintendent Consent Agenda consists of Human Resources Employment Report, 2022-2023 Open Enrollment Applications. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve Superintendent's Consent Agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And those opposed? Thank you. At this time, I will hand it back over to Superintendent Johnson for some administrative announcements.
Thank you. After the employment report, I have two announcements for new administrative positions. First off, Christina Watkinson graduated from Ball State University in Indiana in 2001 with a bachelor's degree, duly majoring in elementary and special education. She earned a master of arts in special ed and autism spectrum disorders in 2015 from the University of St. Thomas in Minnesota. Kristi is licensed to teach elementary and middle-level education, grades one through six, as well as intellectual disabilities and specific learning disabilities. She also recently received a Director of Special Education and People's Service graduate certificate from the University of Wisconsin at Eau Claire. She began her teaching career here in the ECASD in 2001 as a special education teacher at DeLonge Middle School and worked for our district until 2006. Between '06 and '17, Kristi continued to work as a special ed teacher, two years for the school district of Waukesha, five years for Wauwatosa, and three years for Appleton. Since 2017, she has been a special education program support teacher in Appleton. Kristi will be returning to the Eau Claire Area School District this July as the Director of Special Education. Welcome, Kristi. Next, Alicia Kirkman graduated from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire in 2012 with a bachelor's degree in education. She majored in elementary ed and special ed. She also earned a master's degree in ed leadership from St. Mary's University in Minnesota, Minneapolis, in 2018. Alicia holds licenses through the Wisconsin DPI to work as a principal and teach regular and cross-categorical special ed in middle childhood through early adolescence. She began her teaching career at Hillside Elementary in Richmond School District. She worked as a special ed teacher from 2012 to 18. In 2018, she moved to the district behavioral coach position with Richmond, and in 2020, she added the role of district remote learning coordinator. She joined the ECASD as the assistant principal split between Robbins Elementary and Sherman Elementary in 2021. In July of this year, she will be moving into the Sherman principal position. Congratulations to Alicia.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the board's consent agenda. Board's consent agenda includes minutes of closed session, May 16th, 2022, minutes of board meeting, May 16th, 2022, board annual work calendar, intent to file lawsuit disallowance, Eldenki, intent to file lawsuit disallowance, Kay Christensen, intent to file lawsuit disallowance, C. Christensen, intent to file lawsuit disallowance, L. Plackey Worth, and Fall Creek 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement, Carl Perkins. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
So move.
And Terry, just for clarity, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrar?
Yes.
Thank you. Executive Director Johnson, after the approval of the board's consent agenda, you are directed to mail out notices of disallowance. At this time, we will move on to our single remaining item on the agenda, aside from our regularly debrief, and that is a board development session. We will be having board development and work sessions throughout the summer as we prepare for a referendum and our communication plan, as well as look forward to our next monitoring cycle, which will begin in September. We'll run this much like we did our last session. Abby will be presenting, and so Abby and Commissioner Lyons, you'll kind of have the floor. For everyone else, please, you know, be recognized to speak as you need to have the chair. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Abby and Commissioner Lyons for the presentation.
Really, in my introduction to budget development, I gave kind of the summary. What we wanted to do tonight is give you a full, full array of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of months, give you some history, much like some of the things that were said in public comments about where we stand in tax base. We'll have some information in there on all of the things that we've been considering over the time, and quite a bit of information on facilities. Because the facilities, I think you're going to see, are some pretty big numbers. And then we'd really like to hear from the rest of the board and what your thoughts are. And this is really kind of an information gathering for us so that we can go back and do the work of the referendum committee and move this forward to a vote in November. So, Abby?
Thank you.
For clarity, Abby, we're moving towards a vote in August, right? Since that's when we have to have our question done.
Correct.
The election is in November. I just want to make sure I understand what's going on.
Yeah, and we'll review that at the end as well.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, not at all. Thank you. So kind of as Commissioner Lyons said, tonight, we have a few goals of our work session. And so for review, we want to talk about what Budget Development has been talking about, including the tax levy history, some building plans, an update on the community survey. Then we want to do a review of question types, and then what are the next steps for the board moving forward with the referendum? So one of the things that we talked about in Budget Development was looking at a few key districts and how did their tax levy compare 2005, 2011, 2017, and 2021? So you can see in the green, the top bucket, that we included the district, we included their membership rank number, the revenue limit rank, if they had any referendums in place at that point in time, and what was their mil rate. So you can see in 2005, Eau Claire's mil rate was the highest of the four districts that we looked at, and we did not have any referendums in place at that point in time. You can see Lacrosse had 3.5 million, and in Racine, they had 7.4 million. And those were non-recurring referendums, and we'll explain a little bit further on. For those of you that don't know what that means, we do have that covered in a later slide for you. Then we fast-forwarded kind of to 2011 as a marking point. You can see membership rank, Eau Claire was still number eight. You can see that our revenue limit rank dropped from 150 to 235. There was still not any referendum dollars adding to our mil rate, and we went from 1162 to 1004. You can see that we went from being the highest to in the middle of the four districts. Then you can see that at that point in time, Oshkosh had added a non-recurring referendum as well. Then we went to 2017. That was the first year of our 2016 referendum. And you can see that we were the lowest, even with our referendum passing in mil rates. And that's where the 5.86 million came in, was in the 1617 school year. And so, but you can see, when you look at Lacrosse, their strategy has been to go to referendum approximately every five years. We did a little bit of research on budget development, and that was one of the districts we were wondering, how were they doing it? And so they were really looking at 3.5, and then they went to 4.1 in 4.1. And that's been a strategy that Lacrosse is consistently using. Every five years, they're going back to their community and saying, will you please support us? And their questions are very similar, and the dollar amounts have been pretty consistent as well. You can see then, look, Oshkosh must have passed in addition- You can see then, look, Oshkosh must have passed an additional referendum because in 2011, they were at 1.3 million of additional tax revenue, and in 2017, they went to 7.9. And again, also Racine had had some increases. Then we went to 2021. This passed a year ago. Our tax levy was 7.44 cents for every $1,000 of equalized assessed value of property. You can see that our revenue limit rank drops 287. We're still the eighth largest. You can see Lacrosse has decreased as far as their number, their population, their enrollment is going down, so that didn't surprise us. But again, you can see they had that $4.1 million referendum still consistently there. Oshkosh referendum, their nonrecurring must still be in place because it's that same amount. And then you see a big jump for Racine. Racine did a big referendum, and it was even challenged by the courts and had to go back, get passed by five votes, I think is what we talked about, and that was challenged. And it was confirmed that it was by five votes. And so that one was a 30-year referendum, if I remember, and the first few years were about 26 million, and it goes up a couple of times after that. So really, when they were using strategies for referendums, Racine has done the largest that we've seen. And that was, I think it actually just won the court decision just in the last couple of months. And Dr. Johnson's shaking his head yes because that was something we talked about in depth because it was so different than what we've seen with other referendums. So you can kind of just see historically that we went from being the highest mil rate down to the lowest mil rate when we were looking kind of at buckets of time. The other thing that we thought it was important to talk about and share with the community and the board was, what about referendums in Eau Claire? What has it looked like historically? And so we went back and we looked since 1992. This is the list of referendums that the district has put on the ballot. So in 1992, we put a capital question on the ballot, and that did pass, and that was for 27.8 million. In October 97, they tried again, and it was to issue debt, and that referendum failed, and that was for 38.7 million. 1999, in April, they put two questions on the ballot. So you see this nonrecurring, that was a nonrecurring question, and the amounts differed by each year because they were looking to fill that budget gap and look at the operational things. And so that's why you see the different lengths, because it was a motion to exceed a certain amount for a period of one school year. And we'll talk about that a little bit further when we get into the questions. In addition to the nonrecurring questions, they put two questions of issuing debt. So I lied, there was actually three questions on the April 99 balance. You had the operational nonrecurring. There was a debt issuance that was approved for 31.7 million, and then issuing of debt of 2.5 million as well. In April 2007, there was a nonrecurring operating question on the ballot, and that failed. And that was for the years of 2007 to 2010, and that was for just over $21 million. In April of 2011, there were two questions on the ballot. One was issuing debt to remodel Putnam Heights, Robbins, Sherman, and DeLong Middle School, and that total was 51.8 million. And there was a second question on the ballot that looked to buy the current Prairie Ridge building, and it crossed at 3.9 million, and that question failed on that ballot. Then in 2016, which is the most recent one that we talked about, that was a nonrecurring question, and that is currently ongoing and will continue to be able to levy until the fiscal year of 2031. And that's that 5.86 million that we showed in the previous screen. So that's a little bit of history on referendums in the Eau Claire school district. And so we wanted to give you an update, kind of what we've been talking about as far as facilities, and also remind you what Demo and Trends has been working on and what they have revisited since we last discussed facilities. So we've got the ATS R options, South Middle School specifically, and then the recommendation of reviewing the additions to Putnam, Meadowview, and North, because those are the current top priorities for our Demo and Trends Committee. So we'll talk about South first. South has a lot of needs in it. For those of you that lived in the community in 2011, we did a major renovation to DeLong Middle School. And South Middle School is the same blueprint that DeLong was, and it was built 10 years after DeLong was. So about 10 years down the road, we knew that we would need to do a renovation to South Middle School. So this is one of the options for South Middle School. And so you can see that there's some additions in the science. So anything that's blue is an addition to space compared to what's currently there. Anything that's yellow is a planned remodel in that space. And so you can kind of see this addition in the science area is included in all of the options. Option A and B was looking at this classroom space. Keep in mind, South has two levels, so this is just level one, and as well as some remodels in the orchestra space, the band space, the weight room and the fitness room, and then the auditorium, and then some redoing of the office space when you walk into that building. So those are, and we kind of identify what's included in each option. So option A does not include some re-roofing that needs to be done. A and B is the mandatory repairs and betterment. So when we talked before, we talked about what needs to be done in the next five years, what's the high priority needs, what's the medium priority needs? So that's going to be what's falling into that mandatory repairs, is that those items that are identified in the next five years that we're prioritizing. And then option D would be some options that would, we could do if our community supports us, and based upon the dollar amounts to make things even better. You will notice, I don't have any dollar figures on here. That was intentional because we get lost in the numbers, and right now, we wanted to talk about big picture. And once we get the community survey, that will help us narrow down into the options that we'll be able to consider and afford. So this is also still on level one. This is option D. For South, again, kind of some changes in the classroom area and adding on some classroom instruction space. Small SG is considered small group. That's something that is recommended and desired in many of our buildings now. Some of them have it, some don't. So how can we create, again, some more educational space? So again, just a little bit of different layouts, but again, the yellow is any spaces that need to be touched for remodeling, and then blue would be new additions. When we look at level two, again, in options A and B, kind of that whole, looking at classroom space, adding some small group instruction, some work to the IT area and the media center as well, and then some more classroom space. So I'm not sure if these are, you know, seventh or eighth grade wings, probably. And so that's why you see both kind of to mirror each other, to make sure we have enough space. Probably some remodel to the art rooms and ST's storage, because with art, there's a lot of, a lot of things that you need to store, and so some dedicated storage space for each of those. Breakout space, that would be an opportunity to have a larger space where a teacher can pull in a larger group of children. So small group instruction is probably for four or five people, where a breakout group would have space for more student instructions, or some more one-on-one that could be happening. And then, and this is on level two in A, B, and C, also looking at the tech ed space. Some of our classrooms are undersized for some of the things that we have, and so really being able to, you know, maximize our space and how can we utilize some of the equipment that we have in there. And then level D, again, or level two, option D really adds and looks at kind of what, if we want to put in addition for classrooms and getting that breakout space. And again, what are these options and what do they look at? Again, there's an idea to add some additional recreational space off of the end. Again, not sure we'll be able to do that, but just kind of in a perfect world, if we could have everything that we wanted, that would be something that would be appreciated for South. So kind of backing up into Demo and Trends. Demo and Trends doesn't have any recommendations on South because South was taken out of the 2016 referendum because of the cost. And so I think as we've been talking in budget development, South is kind of at the top of our list, knowing that DeLong got that same upgrade in 2011 and now we're, you know, 11 years down the road. So I would say in budget development, we've talked a lot about South Middle School, and that really needs to be at the top of the priority list from a facility standpoint. Budget development, did we have anything else we want to add about South?
No, I think it's important that most of these recommendations are coming out of the architectural review and all of the things that the architects identified doing walkthroughs of the building as needing either immediate or very short-term replacement is being included in this.
Thank you. So now we'll kind of transition into this current school review from Demo and Trends. So when we got the facility study that Commissioner Lyons was talking about, we met with Demo and Trends, and we looked at kind of these specific schools. So Demo and Trends had really brought forward recommendations to the board about Putnam, Meadowview, and North High School. And that's really from the capacity standpoint, because we want our schools to operate between 85 and 90%. And so as we've been looking, as that group was looking forward for enrollment projections and things, they were starting to see some trends that we needed to address some space issues with those. So we shared kind of the architect's recommendation for these three buildings. And so in the first initial review, Meadowview, Demo and Trends noted that the recommendation for classroom space didn't make it a four-section school. So there were four sections of some grades, but not four sections of all, and that is one of the priorities with Demo and Trends, as well as conversations we've had, is that we want our buildings to be four-section schools. We understand that that is kind of that optimal, really good functioning. And so when we first looked at Meadowview, kind of the first draft, we didn't have four sections for all of the grades, so that's something that we took back to the architects, and they're working on for us. Option D, which is one of the options that we'll look at tonight, is the closest to getting to four sections, but there were still two more classrooms that were needed to hit that goal. And so from the Demo and Trends standpoint, their target was to add 150 seats to be able to allow for growth in that area. Putnam Heights, similar thing as Meadowview, we wanted to add six classrooms. So looking at versions C and D, which we'll show you in just a minute. And then their question related to the breakout space is, could that become a flexible space if we needed it? If we had, you know, if we had a bubble year and we needed an extra classroom or something, how could we utilize that space in the future as well? And then for North High School, from the demo committee, really was looking at space. So we made a boundary change for North at Memorial, and the goal of that boundary change was to get enrollment to be within 100 students of each other. So we're there, we're within 100 students, but the space isn't the same. So North's capacity is about 1,700 students, and Memorial's is about 1,900. So a lot of our conversations for North is, we need to bring the space equivalent to the space at Memorial, and they won't be, will be able to, you know, continue that target of the boundary change that was done a few years ago. A couple other ideas, when the committee looked at North, and I'll articulate when we get there. But there are some remodeling that needs to be done in the tech ed area. And so they were wondering about, you know, working with that private and part, private and public partnership, and could we get sponsors to help sponsor some of those rooms, or maybe donate towards some of the cost of the remodeling and articulating that? So one of their ideas was to have, you know, a business name, the Makerspace. So IBM Makerspace, or IBM Computer Lab, or something like that was an idea and a question they had. Demo did have some questions about the music rooms, and as we get there, I can show you that a little bit as well, because we know we needed to expand the cafeteria areas, and so then that kind of butts into the music rooms. And so they had some questions about, could they repurpose the East Gym and add more of an athletic complex on the end by the doghouse and have the athletic facilities kind of in the same area instead of two locations in the school? So Meadowview, kind of as I said, option D was the closest version of a four-section school for Meadowview that Demo and Trends looked, so we just wanted to bring forth that option D. The architects are working on option E. We just talked about that this morning, in order to bring that up to four sections, and what does that look like? But the bulk of the work at Meadowview is in the cafeteria and the kitchen, and so creating that space to be big enough for the students that are there. And then in this version, as you can see, this is, we only have three first grades and three kindergartens, so that's where the additional two classrooms are needed. Everything else makes it up to four. And so we just met with the architects this morning and kind of walked through what the committee saw. So we'll be getting some updated versions to look at. But again, same philosophy as the South, anything that's in blue is new. And then anything that's in yellow is, you know, remodeled, or spaces that we would need to be touching. Okay, I think that's our, we did, we did get a version of option E, which does add some classroom space. And again, we looked at this just this morning, so that we have a few more questions. But this model does get us to four sections for the kindergarten and the first grade and the second grade. And then it's adding two fifth grade classrooms up here. So we definitely have some tweaks to make, and we have to, you know, bring it back to the principal and get some more input from the school as well. But we feel like right now, option E is getting us that additional classroom space that we're looking at. Putnam Heights, one of the things for Putnam that I wanted to remind you is that there's not as much work to be done at Putnam because they had a major upgrade in 2011. And so because of that upgrade, when that remodel was done, it was already designed to be able to easily add and make it four sections. And so that's why you seem really just kind of looking at a couple of spots in the building and not more of the building like Meadowview. And so when we get to the point where we start looking at numbers, you will see a big difference in that as well because of the investment that was made for Putnam in 2011. So again, I just have one picture of Putnam, I believe, here. And so you can kind of see some discussion happening around the first grade rooms, and are they, you know, kind of up to educational adequacy as far as size goes? Right now, these yellow are all first grade rooms. And so talking about, instead of having three first grade rooms, have them be two first grade rooms and a resource room, and then have the other two first grade rooms here. So again, we're looking at that, trying to figure it out.
Maybe getting into the weeds question, but I noticed that, going through this report, unfortunately, it's very long, so I didn't read it every page. But outdoor classroom component was encouraging to me that it's something that's being evaluated at each of our buildings. But the illustrations are provided, they're like internal heartscaped spaces, at least in the ones that we're looking at. And I'm wondering what the rationale is for that orientation?
Don't know if I can fully answer, but we did talk about this one specifically this morning because there was a question about, what is that, what is it currently? Is it currently concrete, or is it, you know, a combination of something? And from what I understand, it's not all concrete, there's some concrete and there's some grass. So that's a great question, and it's something that we talked about, but I don't think it's been finalized. We also talked about doors and easy access, to be able to get to access that space and use it, but it's definitely a desired space if we can make it work.
But I mean, the other part that is, these are all like surrounded by building. So I think outdoor classrooms were, in most places, historically viewed as a luxury thing. And now, you know, especially post-COVID, we all wish we had several of them per building. But, you know, being enclosed in this space that's smaller than a gymnasium, like I'm just wondering how, you know, what's the philosophy behind containing it within a building?
Sure.
Without, you know, being on, somewhere on the periphery of the building, I guess. So I mean, it's outdoors in terms of it doesn't have a roof, but other than that, it seems like it's just another room.
Well, I think right now, too, at least this one, this one's open. This, this is all, the blue is all addition and renovation to, you know, get to that four section. So, but I'm not sure in the others, and that's a great question that I can bring back as we're evaluating and ask what the recommendations are. Any other questions on Putnam? Oh, I lied, we do have one more Putnam. Again, this is, I think, compares of the two, really looking at that resource space. And then the outdoor classroom space, you can see, is a little bit different based upon where, which side the classrooms are on, I think, is what it looks like, might be a little bit different. So it looks like option E, we added some classrooms here, split them up, and added that small group instruction. Okay, so North, which is the last school that, you know, kind of Demo and Trends had the recommendation and brought forward. So you can see there's lots of blue up here in the CR, CR's classroom, I don't think I said that before. And so we know that we need to get more classroom space at North. When we looked at this this morning, we really need more classrooms. So this, in this proposal, there's an additional six classrooms, we need at least eight. And so that was one of the things that they were going to take back. The Commons area that Demo and Trends was talking about is this area right in here. And so we need to have some additional space. So they talked about remodeling the restrooms, and then some of the space here. And then um some of the space here as well and kind of taking that over for common space. Then we would need to kind of shift that music space. And that's why you see choir over here. Um, black box is kind of like another performance space. So if you have a theater class that needs to practice and they don't need the full auditorium or choir rehearsal or things like that. So when it says the BLCK box, it's just another space that can be used for instruction as well as performing. And then in this um option, the weight room and um fitness room would be moving. It's currently in um, I think it's currently over here in this art space. And so be moving it closer to the um gym, the rock house there. The other things that we talked about a lot for North was the tech ed areas. Um, some of those classrooms, either we don't have enough or we don't have enough space to utilize all of the equipment. And we know that tech ed is an area that is growing in demand. And so um in some of the options, you see um some remodeled tech ed space. And then in some of the options, you see blue, which is an actual addition to that space. Um, the, the media center, it needs a um remodel, so that's why you see that there. And then when we are talking about the public and private partnership, the forum space is much like what you're gonna find on a college campus. So I think about Hibbard one hundred where you have, you know, the stage for people to present and then you have lots of space for kids in like a lecture hall. And so that forum space again provides some additional flexibility to have larger classrooms for um things that they might need. And they're, the architects are recommending that um as if you're remodeling to incorporate that into some of the high schools, because they're seeing that as more of a need in the high school areas um than the maker space. So we have um some equipment um designed to kind of be used in a maker space. And so we've been trying to figure out where's the best location for that. Um, and I know as we've been talking about media center and remodeling, that maybe that would be part of it. And so again, when um Demo and Trends was talking about um private partnerships, private part, private public partnerships, could you look at that, that maker space and could we partner with somebody to name it or put a donation towards some of that um space to be remodeled as well? So that was some of the feedback that we got from them. I think that um the biggest piece for Demo for North was really getting that classroom space. So that way then they're not feeling so um crunched in their capacity. And then again, as I mentioned, they kind of had some questions about, you know, this whole um adding on to the commons and then, you know, how does that work with the um music rooms? Um, here's another option um for North that we were kind of talking about. Still kind of some similar remodeling in the common and the cafeteria area. Um, adding on again, only five classrooms here. Um, but looking at the art rooms and are the art rooms, I believe, are kind of undersized right now for the art program. And so um that was, came out of the facility study. And so here was a proposal to make those the right room, the right room size. Um, this um remodeling the space into the learning center, because I think the learning center right now is off of the commons. And so that space would be utilized with taking on some of the common space. And then again, incorporating that tech ed area, but also including the auto shop um in that tech area, because we do have a lot of students taking auto shop. And so, you know, with each of these options, there's different price tags on them. And so um we didn't feel it would be appropriate yet to start bringing forward all the price tags until we have more information from our survey to kind of help us narrow down. Um, but these are just some of the options that we talked about. And then after Demo and Trends met, we kind of went back to the architects and said, okay, here's some of the questions. And so here's kind of a new idea for the common areas um in the cafeteria. And so you can see it still has some remodeling of the um choir area, um but not as much as some of the other options. And so again, kind of this space right now is the teacher's lounge, so needing to move that. Um, but again, you can see we're still short on some classrooms. Um, and then art, just keeping art where it is and doing some remodeling in that area and then touching that tech ed area. So you probably are wondering, why is it important? Why is Demo and Trends just picking out those three buildings? And so at budget development, we had kind of talked about those buildings that still need to be on our radar. So um this, these projections were done in May and shared with Demo and Trends as well. And really kind of looking at what schools do we need to be concerned about? And which ones should kind of be at the top of our priority list. So you can see that I have two in red. And that's Putnam Heights and North High. Um, anytime our buildings get to, get close to that ninety percent, we kind of put them on watch. Because we know that they're probably not operating at the most optimal um level that they can. And so we really want to, you know, have a plan and what are we gonna do for needing those extra seats? So Putnam Heights and North, that's why you see that recommendation um continue from Demo and Trends for the classroom space. Meadowview, um right now, it looks really good. We know that Meadowview has been our hardest school. Because um prior to COVID, they were getting up into that area that we were starting to worry about because of their um enrollment and what our future projections were. They look good right now. Um, but that's a school that has really, for the last few years, ebbed and flowed a lot. And so we know that there's growth in the Meadowview area. We know that there's new developments. And so that's why Meadowview is still kind of on the list from the Demo and Trend standpoint, because that's our school that has been the hardest to predict because it has changed so much over the last few years. You're gonna see a few schools in green. And so one of the things that we had talked about at budget development was we have plenty of seeds on the north side. And so all of our, outside of North High School, our capital projects have been on the south side. And so we talked about, can we reimagine the north side schools and what can we do um in terms of space? And so we know that there has been some questions about a Montessori expansion, because we know that we have a waitlist every year. And I think the many of you have received some communication about that as well. Um, question about dual immersion. Longfellow um was intentionally not um had too much of a boundary change because we knew that program was gonna grow. And so how does that fit into the space available on the north side? Um, and really, again, just looking at those three schools, Lopez Lane and Northwoods, that were impacted by um a boundary change, but they're still under the target of sixty-five percent. You really want uh Demo and Trends, one of their philosophies is we want a building operating at sixty-five percent. Um, we don't want it operating below that because it's just not as efficient. And um it takes more resources when you're not fully utilizing that building at that point. Um, and then the question about Roosevelt, we know that there's significant deferred maintenance and remodels. That's a two-section school. And so we've talked at budget development as well that do we want to put um several million dollars into a two-section school? Um, because we don't build two-section schools anymore. I think we talked earlier about when we're building schools, we always want to be a four-section school. And so that's been some of our conversations. And so needing some help and probably further discussion um on that piece as well. And so our committee had kind of talked about and asked Demo, can you help us with these things and what could that look like? So that's why um you kind of see that green in the um, the capacity because that's a question and a concern. And so how do we move forward with that to kind of um, you know, be hitting those targeted percentages? Now, again, this can all change. We, we're looking at our projections for enrollment in May. And so um we feel good about them, but we know that there will be some ups and downs before school starts and before we see final numbers in September. Any questions on any of the facilities or buildings that anybody has or budget development? Do you want to add anything?
Questions, sir?
Do you have the long-term projections for schools? We, I know we've had that in the past. Do you have that information somewhere?
I do. I don't have it as part of this presentation, but I do have it. Is that something you'd like me to follow up with?
I mean, I'm sure it's somewhere back if I
Yeah.
search back. But yes, that would be great.
I guess I do have one more question. Uh, are we still, what year is, are, is it second graders now going into third grade in the dual language at Longfellow?
Yes, we're adding.
Where, are we anticipating basically adding seventy-five more students to Longfellow in the next three years? Because that would then fill up with third, fourth, I mean, it would be new kindergartners, of course, but third, fourth, fifth graders.
Right.
When, you know, and now granted, that still only adds roughly fifteen percent. And it still puts you just over the sixty-five. But I mean, we are still basically anticipating seventy-five new students at Longfellow.
I think the third grade though is added in this number, so we don't only actually have
Fifteen more. I mean, and that's assuming, I don't know, is it exactly twenty-five? It might be twenty.
Right, exactly. But in the ballpark. Yeah, so this
In mind, I mean, that probably doesn't necessarily apply to this discussion anyway, but that was, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so some other things that um facilities that we had talked about in this kind of came out of our last work session um was, you know, what do people see when they come to our community and what buildings do they look at? And I think we all agreed that high schools were very common places where other community members, I think we talked about Verona, we talked about Hudson, and we kind of talked about those places that you go that you remember, whether it's for co-curriculars or for music. And so um we had kind of talked or we took away that maybe we should look at doing something to Memorial High School as well. Because we know we want to touch North High School, getting that capacity. But are there some things at Memorial that should be considered in this referendum as well? And so um in talking with um the architects and talking with leadership there as well, really, if we could do some things to the auditorium and the little theater, um we know that the auditorium needs um several hundred thousand dollars worth of updates. That is a place that's very visible to our community and we use it a lot for educational purposes and also community. So that was kind of um targeted in this option that we put together for Memorial is that the auditorium would get that up, much-needed upgrade for that. Um, the other spaces that we talked about, and you can kind of see here again, is the common space, the cafeteria area. And so adding an addition on there to create more space for kids. And then this area is kind of the um part of its commons, but part of it's also the media center. And we have already been talking about media center at both high schools. Um, and how do you redesign that and kind of make it viable in the twenty-first century? Because that's a lot different than it was um several years ago. Um, so that is in some of the options. Again, as we were starting to look at dollars and what um potentially could fit into a referendum. And so those were the spaces that we talked about specifically uh for Memorial High School, um and why we kind of separated it from the Demo and Trends recommendations, since that was something that we gathered from our work session.
And then if I, if I just could, I, I, I think I, I would also ask uh to the commissioners to to, to also consider uh when we get to the point of uh discussing potentially the uh the overall cost and what facilities to put in um in that discussion of kind of uh when South was uh not uh included in the twenty-eleven and Long was uh also consider that's why South had a greater cost and need uh this go-around. Uh, it would be, once we begin to look a little bit more at the numbers, not doing sub-something at Memorial would put those expenses at a dire, uh dire cost, just like South. And so it's a matter of kind of one of those things just to, to potentially consider whether or not their percentages are shaded different colors or the uh enrollment projections. I think if we, we consider about just kind of the uh future expectations of costs, that was, that was something that was really kind of brought, uh brought up as well as a, I think, an important talking point on budget.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I think it does, you know, that's one of the wild cards in this referendum as well, because when we were looking at South in twenty sixteen, it was an estimated price tag of probably twenty-five million. And today, right now, our target is double that. Um, and it could change significantly because um there's a lot of unknowns, right? Inflation's going up, um can we get materials? Materials costs are going up. And so as we're looking at numbers and reviewing, where does everything land? Um, that's gonna be a challenge. I think that as we have to make decisions, what can we do and what fits into what bucket? But that is a big concern. And you're absolutely right, because in twenty sixteen, and we're only six years down the road, and it's double the cost. There's other factors, of course, that are playing into that, that we haven't seen for, you know, forever, probably. Um, but I think that will be a part of the discussion and part of the challenge of the work as we go forward.
Yeah, and I was looking ahead in one of the other, in, in another slide and another point, though, I, I think uh seeing where earlier investments and uh potentially uh anticipating growth uh decreases cost, uh when we look at, look at the additions and the changes that have to be made to Putnam, given their uh originate, original change in being set up for potential expansion in the future, really reduces uh the expenses uh long-term. And so that's something else to consider as we, as we, as we look at each of these facilities that um especially that align with future projections that uh some of this work could uh also be done to uh potentially um prepare it for expansion at later times as well, uh at a reduced cost. So those are really a lot of the, you know, things that have to come out. Uh, I think be, I would say encouraging, potentially talking points to uh to the community and or yourself as you're thinking about uh what we should focus on. Thank you.
So some of the other things that we talked about in budget development was um kind of what has the um conversation been? Data that we gathered from the survey um that we put out ourselves and then as well as the listening sessions that we had in February and March. And so um, you know, kind of checking the boxes of what type of referendum and how do we prioritize that? And so obviously, we've been talking a lot about buildings and facilities, and that's a capital referendum. And that's where you really want to um issue debt to pay for um those needs. And then you pay the debt off through the referendum and the additional tax levy. Um, sustainability, we've talked a lot about, and that's just gonna be part of our projects. So if we are adding on um to a building, we want to look at solar energy. And we want to look at how do we be the most efficient? Um, because otherwise, trying to do something separate just didn't make sense. And so we really checked the box under capital, that that would just be part of the expectation of any work that we do. Um, then, you know, of course, the other big items that we heard about work class size, we heard about salary, mental health. And again, sustainability, some of that could be in an operational referendum as well. But just kind of wanted to help um for some of you that maybe this is new for, like what kind of um referendums do those items um kind of fall into? And so we wanted to just make sure that that was clear as well. Um, whoops, survey results. So right now, um we have a community survey um going on in our community. Um, and I think you'll remember that we talked about that it was gonna be a joint survey with the city of Eau Claire. And so Baker Tilly is um the organization that we chose to complete that survey for us. As of Friday, a hundred and ninety-five of the calls had been made. They anticipate making four hundred calls. And so um they'll be probably finishing up that this week and then they'll be gathering our data. And so um there is going to be a meeting with them on June twenty-third. Um, that will hopefully clarify some items for us and will help budget development and then essentially you be able to move forward. Um, it should give us a target amount of what they feel will be successful and what our community will support. Um, they should also give us some clarity on what should we be asking for? Is it capital only? Is it capital operational? And kind of hone in on what we should be in what our community will support. And then the second thing, that's kind of a big question for us, is should the district be putting a question on the November ballot? So I think most of you know that the city of Eau Claire is also going to referendum in November. And they have said they're going in November twenty-twenty-two, no matter what. And so um that, one of the things that we wondered about is, is that gonna impact any school district question that's on the ballot? Because we're competing for our taxpayers' money and concern about inflation and you know, the cost and everything that's going on, um not just in our community, but in the world as well. And so um we'll get some clear guidance. That is one of the questions that um the survey, um Baker Tilly is gonna ask is you know, somewhere along the lines of if there are two questions on the ballot, a city question and the Eau Claire School District ballot. If you had to choose to support one, would you support the city? Would you support the school district? I would support both. And so that should help us as well. Um, kind of get a big picture of how is our community feeling? And then also kind of feeds back into helping us with that target amount. And then we can really start fine-tuning what is included in the referendum.
That June twenty-third uh meeting isn't intended to be a budget development meeting. It's intended to be a board um noticed meeting so that everyone, um other commissioners can listen in on the survey results and, and, and be a part of that dialogue.
And that will be a joint meeting with the city. There are some city representatives as well. And we currently are targeted to meet in this room um at ten AM. So that way then um the representative from Baker Tilly can provide us the results. And we really do want it to be free-flowing and be able to be interactive and be able to ask questions. Um, and then also listen and learn what did they find out from the work that they did on our behalf. So um, that is, thank you, Commissioner Alliance, for sharing that, because we wanted to make sure that that, everyone because we wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we plan to notice it as a regular meeting, so that way then everybody could listen and have the ability to ask questions as well.
And they am on the 23rd, Abby.
It is. Welcome. All right, so then we wanted to do a little bit of a refresher on the question, because we know that it's been a while since we've talked about referendum questions. And so the key things that you need to know about question is kind of what does a capital improvement include? And so we talked a lot about capital improvements tonight, additions, remodeling, renovations. All of those things are considered capital in nature, and you would want to use bonds to pay for those, because you're usually talking a large dollar amount that doesn't fit within your operating budget. And debt service, that's how we pay the debt. So we issue the bonds, we complete the work, and then we have regular debt payments that we pay based upon that tax levy, and we would levy in the year that the payments are due. We look at operational versus capital. Operational, you just want to think about our normal day-to-day expenditures. It could be utilities, obviously, 80% of our budget is in our people. So you think about what are those things that we need to keep operating every day to keep us going? The capital is really looking at building new facilities, improvements. And then you, again, you want to issue that debt. And the amount of debt, you try to figure out, and you look at how many years do we want to pay that debt forward? It's typically 15 to 20 years, and that is always dependent upon what's the rate, what's the amount, and what does our tax levy look like? Again, I think our goal is always to try to keep our tax levy as flat as possible so that way then our community and our taxpayers don't feel like this year, oh my gosh, my taxes went way up, and then they're going down and up and down. You really, the goal with debt service is to try to keep it flat so that way then there's minimal interruption on the community side. So there's four different types of questions related to referendums. And so high level, I wanted to talk about them, and then we'll dig into what does each one need and what does it look like? So when we say capital, that's really issuing the debt, so that way then we can do those capital improvements, and we would issue that for a specific dollar amount. When we talk about reoccurring operational, we would say we want to start a certain amount for a year, and then recurring means it goes on forever. So if we would ask for $2 million a year in a recurring referendum, we would be able to levy that $2 million forever, it never goes away. Non-recurring, which is kind of when we first started, we talked about the districts that we looked at. Everybody had non-recurring types of referendums, and that's for a very specific period of time. There's a couple of different variances of that, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But usually, it will go on for a certain amount of time, and then once that non-recurring time is expired, you have to figure out, do we go back to our community and ask for more money? Or do we, does our operations look different? And so the strategy that La Crosse is using is they're doing a non-recurring operational, and they just are consistently going to their community every five years. And then the last type of question is a non-recurring operational where you incorporate debt issuance into your question, and it refers to debt service. And then that's a piece of what you do is you issue debt to get those big projects done, and then you use the non-recurring operational to pay those debt payments. And I'll give you more specific examples as we kind of work through these to help you relate. And if you have questions on any of these, just stop me as we're going through it. So the sample debt question is probably the simplest one. There's a lot of legal language in here, and we work with attorneys to tell us here's exactly what it has to be. But basically, we have to say that we're a school district, what counties do we operate in? And then under State Statute 67, we want to issue general obligation bonds and the amount not to exceed, and we would put in a dollar amount. And then we would say for the purpose of paying for, it could be school buildings, it could be improvements. And then you, where the blanks are, are things that the board would have to decide, and we would fill in as we got closer to setting in that question in August. So when we talked earlier about the times that ECSD had gone to referendum, we had used a question like this in October 92, October 97, April 99, and April 2011. So that has been a common strategy and a common question that we've used for those capital referendums that we have done in that timeframe. If we look at a recurring operational question, again, it still has the same shell of the Eau Claire School District, in which counties we operate in. And then again, it refers to the state statute that allows us to exceed the revenue limits. And then in this question, it's really just $1 amount for whatever school years we want to. So it could be a year, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, based upon, well, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong question. Recurring goes on forever and ever, never. So we just fill in that it starts in this year. And then that's why it says school year and thereafter, because it never goes away. And then we would articulate, how do we plan to use those funds? And because it goes on and on forever, you would be a little bit more vague in the purposes consisting of, because if you narrow it down and say we're only going to use it for salary, then you have to be able to show how you're using that for salary. Or for utilities, you have to show how you're using that. So you want to have that, when it's a recurring, you want to be a little bit more broad in your language, so that way then you've got some flexibility in how to use those funds as you need them. I do not believe, from my records, that Eau Claire has asked for a recurring question before that I could find. So non-recurring is where I got on a tangent last time, so I apologize about that. Again, the basic stuff is the same. Eau Claire School District, which counties we operate in, the state statute. And in this question in particularly, you can see multiple dollar signs. And this one was similar to what was done in Eau Claire in 1999. There were different dollar amounts based upon the year. So we would just have to fill in the blanks. So with non-recurring, you can do different amounts for several years, or you can do one amount for three years, and then three years down the road, do a different amount and a different amount. Or you can just say not to exceed a certain amount for all of the timeframe of the referendum. And so that will have to be something that, if we're going to do an operating question, that we would work through that process of what does that look like? And that's where some of the budget projections come in as well. Anybody else have anything to add on the non-recurring question? Okay. This question was, I think I said that, it was similar to April 1999, where we had all of those different amounts for the different years. And so they had a whole lot of blanks that were in there. And again, we have to articulate, how are we going to use those funds? That's part of the question as well. And then the last type is the one that we used in 2016. And so basically, the difference is it's an operating question, but it really articulates that you can include debt service in there. And so again, the district would need to fill in and with the board, fill in what are those blanks and what do they look like? And I'm just going to switch over to the 2016 question, because this will help a little bit. So this sentence about debt service for capital improvement projects, that's the piece that allows us to pay debt service with this type of a question. And so this gives us the authority to pay the debt payments. We have to do a different process to actually issue the debt, because that's what's different with the capital question versus an operating. Capital, you get the ability to issue the debt and pay the debt. With the operating, you just get the ability to pay the debt, and so you have to go through the process to issue the debt, which is very simple. There's just a few other things that we have to do. And so I just wanted to be clear that it's two steps versus in the capital. It's all in that question, and it's a capital question. And then as you can see, you know, these are the blanks that we filled in. We did the 5.8 million, we did the same amount for the next 14 years. And then the items were for staff, for building, maintenance, safety and security, class-size technology, and then that debt service component. And so as far as operating questions go, non-recurring, 2007, 2008 was a failed referendum in Eau Claire. And then, so that was, that was the only, I think, non-recurring question that I could find. And that was a big one, as we saw earlier tonight.
If I could, I think the thing that we've also been talking about as it pertains to, you know, preparing for this is, as we look at this non-recurring, non-recurring operating question, what's highlighted in purple is being very deliberate in articulating to communities and all other stakeholders currently how that is, those expenditures are taken care of now, along with Esser, and what the additional amounts that we would be asking for, how they would differ in their roles and their purposes along with what we currently are doing. And that's really, has also been an important theme that we've continued to talk about. So, you know, I think really, you know, communicating and getting that out to all stakeholders involved is going to be very, very important in making those particular distinctions.
Thank you. Yeah, and you're absolutely right. That was a piece that I missed that we have been talking about, because this is how we tell our story. Once that question is set, that gives us the opportunity to tell our story and why do we need the funds, and to be able to articulate helps when it's right there in front of us. So we wanted to review our calendar, and so kind of what are our next steps? And what are we working on? And how do we need your help? And then we'll again, ask for some more discussion. But on our calendar, the work calendar for the referendum, we highlighted in yellow, are we for sure going in November? I think that, you know, all of our work is pointing towards November. I think we'll really get a good feel from our community once we get those survey results on June 23rd. And so again, our timeline and everything we're talking about is still November 2022. And that's why we have August circled, because our plan and what we've discussed about is that the official resolution would be adopted at the first April meeting, and that would be finalizing the question, finalizing the amount, because our job is to certify it to the municipalities by August 30th. And so we kind of wanted that end date to be very focused and on everybody's radar. And if for some reason we aren't able to do it at the August, I think it's August 1st and August 15th, we can, you know, kind of finish up on August 1st if here's what we think, and then, you know, wait until the 15th to certify it. That certainly gives us plenty of time. But just know kind of we've got that target, because we know we have some work to do to finalize that piece and have it ready to certify.
I think the penciled-in board work for the summer has basically a full-on just work session on August 1st to be able to spend the time to break these down. And then I think the current plan does probably look at an adoption on the 15th. That can obviously be changed, nothing is set in stone, but I think that's for, you know, budget development referendum committees, like that's the current plan. And then I would also say that board is available, whichever of the members of the board are available for additional work sessions that need to be had, if there is more full discussion that need to be had, say between the 23rd and the 15th, to really iron out some of those details or to talk about the ins and outs. We can get those on the calendar for those of you that hopefully could be there. But well, we're ready to do the work that is necessary to make sure that we're ready by the 15th or an emergency meeting on the 22nd or something if we had to. But I mean, that's just for, you know, that's the current discussion. We'll have a little bit more discussion about that agenda setting tomorrow, but I don't see anything right now that would throw us off that, unless budget development, you need us to do something different.
Yeah, yeah, you had a perfect segue, because that was really in our next step. So obviously, reviewing the survey on the 23rd. Again, like we said earlier, here at 10:00 a.m., Baker Tilly will present the results. Budget development, we met a couple, well, two weeks ago, I think, we met and talked about what is our next step after we have the survey results. And I think we tentatively are going to try to connect after, on the 23rd, to kind of see what do we need to do, because there are some vacations and some different things. And we wouldn't probably be able to convene again until like July 18th, which we know is the next board meeting. And so we thought we would try to gather and kind of plan out and see what do we need to do? And kind of, you know, what direction or what things should we be working on during that time? But really then, you know, I think that survey is key for our work, because that's really going to narrow down and answer those questions for us. And then that will give us some opportunity to discuss and then bring forward some recommendations as far as, you know, what kind of question, number of questions, all of those things that we're still kind of wondering about. And then, you know, keeping it flexible of do we need another school board work session? Or is it just our committee? Because one of our goals is to make sure that the full board is informed, and if there are questions, to be able to just kind of make sure that we vetted them so that we were bringing forward the right information to help, knowing that our end goal is, you know, that August, essentially August 15th, unless there's a special meeting to get that question finalized.
Budget development committees are already all publicly noticed, right?
They are.
You, just for the season leading up to like, you know, August 15th, or just like send all of the board members an invitation, you know, just so that if, and are they being streamed still even while they're in person?
We have not.
So, but if then a board member was available and wanted to just sit and listen in, you know, I've done that in the past to kind of stay up on the discussion. But if you just send that so that it's, so we don't have to like hunt it down, then we'll just come to us as an invitation. That way, if people are interested in saying, maybe they're saying, I'm going on vacation, but I want to hear this in case I, whatever. Thank you.
One question that we did have, I'm sorry for interrupt. So like I said, we're going to try to connect after that survey results on the 23rd. And I wasn't sure on the July 18th meeting if there was anything planned, or, and maybe you'll talk more about it tomorrow, but if there is something that is referendum-related, we'll want to know that sooner rather than later, so that we then, as we're balancing vacations and things, we can make sure and have that information ready.
At the risk of getting in front of Dr. Beaker again. I think the current discussion was to do a board development session on the communication plan, kind of be alternating those. If there's something that budget development feels like we need a chunk of time, we might be able to take some of that, although I know there's been some good work so far on and some specific ideas for enacting all these pieces of the communication plan. But I think that's the, we got penciled in, and we'll have more information after agenda setting tomorrow. Sorry, Dr. Beaker.
No, I just thought maybe on the June 23rd, when Baker Tilly presents at 10:00 a.m., and we were holding that, it's 1 o'clock that afternoon. Maybe that could be open to everyone as well. Well, yeah, if you're there in the morning and you have some ideas, the city people leave, it's just us.
We could definitely notice it that way, I think.
And if people can come, great, and if not, we can just run too.
Well, certainly, I do not think we will have the kind of final document until they present that day, but we'll have it after that. So we kind of talked about that this morning, that, you know, they'll be busy compiling, and probably the first time any of us will see it will be on June 23rd.
It really is digesting those survey results and then turning that into that decision on what to include and how everyone here engages in that process. That's, that's really the question that I have coming out of this. Nice presentation, Abby. We have the survey review that will inform us what the community is thinking. And then we need to take that and decide, given all of this information that you presented, what fits into that question?
That'll also, I think, help us narrow down like these options that we looked at tonight of, you know, kind of putting together a plan and knowing the priorities of. So we talked a lot that South is kind of our number one, when we're talking facilities, South is kind of our number one. And then Putnam North, I would say right behind there. And then, you know, in my mind right now, Meadowview is like, we need to do it. Can we do it? Will it fit in our box? So how do we put that together? And that will give us some time in advance too, to talk with the architects and engineers to say, okay, here's, here's what we're thinking range. Can you help us develop some plans that, you know, kind of fit into that range? Because we'll have that little bit more of information, and I think that will be valuable for all of us.
I think one thing I wanted to mention somewhat in relation when Dr. Johnson brought up some things about telling our story. Over two years ago, when being interviewed and I was able to talk to, whether it was Dr. Beaker, Dr. Nordin, or Phil, back in, I think it was March, it was the first round. And that's a question I had, was fund balance and how important fund balance is when it comes to bonds. I just equate bonds, bonds to buildings. And I remember Aaron Harder had answered the question and how proud he was to be able to say, I think we're going to be at 20% this year. Now, because the district has been very efficient with its funds, 26, 28, or 20 in the area, that makes a tremendous difference to the taxpayer in this community. And I think that's part of the story we need to tell as well. This district has been very planful with its, with its funds. And not that we not that we have to have a, a huge fund balance to, to have this savings account, so to speak. That, that's not the point. But, but the impact that it does have on that bond rating is, is critical.
Interest savings.
Richard, sir. Okay, I've got like a whole list of things. Okay, so can you go back? Okay, so if we go back to slide three, sorry, Terry. The three, all the way back.
We'll get there to just know which one is three.
This one or this one?
That one. You got it.
Okay. Okay, so looking at the mill rate, what, what I'm missing here is what does that mean? I think our community is not going to understand what that means. When we say our, our mill rate is the lowest it's been in, you know, two decades. What does that mean right? So the mill rate paying less, are we paying less? Are we paying less right now? So my, my tax, the, you know, actualized value on my property, is it less now than it was in 2005? Am I paying less for my public schools than it was in 2005?
Um, yes. Because our mill rate has gone down. Now, the, your property value, which is also a big piece of that has gone up. So if you want to compare an old tax bill to your tax bill today, I can't guarantee that because there's those other factors. But when we levy, we always look at the mill rate.
Right.
And so per thousand dollars of equalized value of property, yes.
Well, so just, so just, just like clarification, like when Wausau did their $119 million referendum this spring, had a, they advertised it as a negative 0.47 cent or whatever it was. And like, I don't think that our community is going to understand that if our mill rate goes up, like, so I mean, I'm just talking about storytelling here about, about how we, when we go out and talk about this, the actual impact of our, the last two decades of work in this district has been to bring that rate down. And going to referendum, when we are sitting at 287th in the state at a mill rate for the eighth largest district, like, we need to be very articulate. And so that, you know, Wausau was real smart in their messaging on that referendum. Because they, that really wasn't what was happening. It was just that they had a debt drop and we've had multiple of those. You know, and we just never went to referendum in a year when that was happening. So I think it's just really important that we articulate that story very clearly so that the taxpayers don't see this as, hey, we're like raising your taxes a whole bunch. No, we're going back to a probably a more fair level of contribution compared to where we have been historically and where we should be at.
Well, and even when we went to referendum in 2016, 17, you know, I think the board approved it was either 90 or 95 cents. And when everything was certified on April, April 15th, October 15th with our aid and we passed, when we knew what our aid was coming from DPI and that, you know, we knew our enrollments and everything, the actual increase was less than that. So we had predicted and told people it was going to be either 90 or 95 cents. I don't remember right now. But it ended up coming in lower than that. And every year since then, we've actually gone down. So I think you're absolutely right. That has to be part of our storytelling. One of the things that we did in 2016, which I think would be very valuable, once we have everything set, is we have a tax calculator right on our referendum website. So I could go and type in the value of my home and I could see exactly how much that proposed referendum was going to cost me on my tax bill. And so that was another thing that we encouraged our community to go and look at. So they could say, okay, what does 95 cents mean to me or what does 90 cents?
Right, but it might be fun to let them calculate it. What would you have been paying in 2005 for your public schools? And so we've been hearing a lot about the heyday of open public education, right? Well, perhaps the heyday was when we were funding our schools at almost twice the rate that we are right now as a community. So I think that that's just really important as, as we talk to the community about, you know, what, what a $200,000 home in 2005 would have meant at a mill, at that mill rate versus what it means at 7.44. You know, I think that that's just an important thing that we articulate very clearly because, you know, that, that Wausau narrative was misleading in a way. And, and I mean, they were smart to go to referendum when they did that amount because they could do that with that debt drop. We're just not, we, the timing is off for us in there. You know what I mean? So, okay, so that's one part of what I wanted to say. The second thing, in, in all of these conversations, the thing that I am missing, and I think perhaps Mr. Goings referred to this a little bit. We're talking about adding on to buildings, putting classrooms here, putting classrooms there. What does that, what does that mean?
That's a capital referendum.
No, 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 I know, I know.
Okay.
What is that, what does that mean? What do our kids gain for that? When we're adding those wing, doing those really fancy renovations to the tech ed department, right, at North? What does that mean? So CBT C had the largest margin on a referendum recently with 2020, they run the referendum? 62.2% to what? 37, 30, yeah, 37.8. And all they went to referendum for was workforce development. If, if that tech ed department means workforce development, that's what we're talking about. That's a big, that's a big, those are big words. And so, you know, I, I, I think that in this referendum, when we, when we're talking about adding on to buildings and increasing, you know, instructional space or whatever that is, but does that, is that lowering class size? If that's not the goal, fine. If it is, if it's in, you know, creating more differentiated instruction space with these, you know, common areas and small group instruction space. You know, I, I think we have to, we have to start looking at umbrellas of phrases rather than just like, well, we're going to put a wing on here with 16 spaces. And I don't think the community, I mean, I care about it because I understand the value of a classroom when you got overcrowding. But at the same time, like our community needs to see what the value in these, these renovations are. So I, I hope at some point we start to talk in that storytelling capacity about what this actually means for our district and what this means for our kids. So, you know, one of the questions I have is what do kids gain? What do kids gain when we increase the capacity of their school? What is that gain for? Now, I, I have a problem looking at those projections and that's why I asked for those long-term projections. I have a problem when we're looking at, at, I understand the schools that are in red and if they're going to stay in red for the foreseeable future, that's something we need to address. But adding on the Meadowview, when we have Robbins with deferred maintenance, and I know you're going to say it's a two-section school. I know that's going to be your, your, your line.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt. Yeah. You Robbins.
That Robbins.
But, you know, like to, to add, when they're, when they're what, 0.4 percentage points in the spread? On, on, you know, there's actually more open seats at Meadowview than there is at Roosevelt. So how do we, like, that's a justification that I, I don't feel like if, you know, I, I feel like if, if the goal is to, if the goal is to decrease the crowding in those rooms, because I've been inside all three referendum schools this spring. I went to all three, Putnam and Roosevelt and Meadowview. And in Meadow, at Meadowview and Roosevelt, there are kids on top of kids on top of kids in those classrooms. They're, they're crammed in there like sardines. And I would say Roosevelt perhaps a little bit more significantly than Meadowview just because of the size of like the auditorium, the gym that they have there is quite big. They can spread some kids out. But the, you know, if the goal, then how are we prioritizing that Meadowview? It's that and Roosevelt doesn't. So I think we just have to be, like, I, as a board member, if, if it matters to all kids. And we've got, you know, deferred maintenance that, okay, so Roosevelt has not gotten some updates that other schools have gotten. To, to prioritize Meadowview over Roosevelt seems not okay to me. So maybe at some point to see the figures on Roosevelt again, I know we have them somewhere in all the presentations. But, you know, I would like to make sure that we're continuing to look at those costs. And then again, if we're making big statements about something that we want as a school district, so again, in addition to Memorial in the conversation now, why? And what does that gain? And if we're gaining it at North, do we need to gain it at Memorial? Because we're doing something big as a district like workforce development or like post-secondary readiness or like decreased classroom size or increased multi-use instructional space, whatever that might be. But I'm just looking for bigger umbrellas of goals when we're talking about these things. So I don't know if, if budget development's not probably articulating that necessarily, but it's something that, that I feel is missing from these conversations about what are we aiming for? Why spend money? Like you can have all the numbers and facts and figures and demo and trends on a, on a, you know, in a, in a, in a survey and on a spreadsheet. But I want to know why I'm spending the taxpayers' money? What our kids are going to gain from these improvements? And that's what I'm missing, I think.
I think it's really important to point out though, that in the recommendations that are here, Roosevelt is not listed as, as being in this, in this referendum. It's Putnam Heights, Meadowview and South with North. So that's, those are the four areas. Now personally and individually, and what I gleaned out of my time in Demo and Trends is that four-section schools have an efficiency about them in staffing, in utilities, in, in almost everything because it's, it, it's a larger school, so it's sized, I think correctly for administration, for counseling, for, for a whole number of things. And I think I remember that with Roosevelt being a two-section school, they actually need to share staff with other, with other, other schools. So one of the principles of Demo and Trends is that if you're going to recommend remodeling, that it needs to be a four-section school just for the efficiency of the tax dollars in the community. And, and I buy into that. So that, that's just individually what, what I took away from my time in Demo and Trend. Why I kind of agree in renovation, fine. Remodel, remodel's a different deal for me. Remodeling a two-section school should have a conversation about why are we not remodeling it to be a four-section school? And then if it's a four-section school remodel, I'm fine, but then do we need those seats?
Yeah. And I think just a counter to that, sorry, not a discussion time. Okay. Okay. Oh, is it? Okay. But to, no, okay, sorry, I'll be recognized.
Richard.
Um, the, my, my counter to that is, is that if, if the goal is to no longer have two-section schools, if that's a goal, then we need to say that out loud. You know what I mean? Rather than letting Roosevelt sit there and wither on the vine with deferred maintenance from years ago. I mean, and all of our schools have deferred maintenance. Let's be clear about that, right? Like every, there's, there's a list at every building that number in the millions. But, you know, like, again, like if, if our goal is efficiency in our elementary and the only, the only buildings that we are going to add on to or significantly renovate to, then, but then why do those students get those benefits and other buildings don't? And that's the part that I, so we're just, we're not going to add those opportunity spaces at, what do we got? Flynn, Roosevelt? Is there another two-section school?
Just those two.
Those two. You know, like, I, I mean, and not that Flynn needs it, but that's the thing that I, that, that I come back to is like, what are the, what are the goals? Why, why do these schools one win out over the other? And so I think that projection data is helpful because I know that you said, you've said that Meadowviews had more, has risen in higher category a few times. But, you know, if, if that's what Demo and Trends needs to say, you know, that's what I would be looking for when we're, when we're, when we're actually looking long-term. So when we're doing these referendum, we're going out and talking to our community. If the goal out of Demo and Trends is, hey, actually these two-section schools are inefficient. We have space on the North side and we're back at the conversation about Roosevelt. You know, then, and that's what we need to hear. But I think until that time, we have schools that have needs and we, you know, and it's hard for me to look at priorities. Meadowview and Roosevelt being as similar as they are with one building having such significantly more deferred maintenance than the other, it's, it's tricky for me.
I think you can help a little bit with a couple of questions. Is that okay? I'm going to go to Dr. Farrar and then I'll come back to you.
Just have one sentence really to say here, which is that the, the word you aren't using, which I think applies is that this may be an equity issue in terms of thinking about making sure that students that go to all of our schools have excellent opportunities and excellent facilities and, and that Roosevelt as a, as a two-section building. Okay. Are, are we deciding that we aren't investing in those students because the, the building is a two-section building that, that seems an equity issue to me. And that's the end of my comment.
Senator Johnson.
There are a few things at play here when you, when you brought up. I, I go back to Dr. Bika, once, once upon a time with the slides, the dollar slide. Where does our money go? And I think it's 1%? Abby, is it 1%?
Yeah, it is for capital.
Just regular capital maintenance. If that were 3%, and, and that's part of the questions that we had asked on the survey. Granted, the, the first three or maybe four were capital. We did have some operational as well. But let's say that, you know, that was increased from 1% to 3%. That's a tremendous amount of funding. That takes care of, to your second point about, you know, the, the packed classrooms in certain elementary schools, you know, and we acknowledge that. We heard that from a parent, I believe, back in September about class size. That was before SRR3 funding came on. And we thought it was more important. Yep, we would risk having a bit higher class size in the elementaries. But we provided the interventions for all of our elementaries because at that time, what was it? Six? Six out of the 13 or seven maybe had them, but not everybody did. And meaning coming into this pandemic that the, the students needed it. I think with the elementaries, if you were to talk to principals right now, teaching and learning, Kim Kohler, HR with staffing, I think our elementaries are going to be in a pretty good spot next year with that. So that, that's going to be good. With elementaries, it's kind of tough, especially in a two-section school. You get five or six students that pop in, in the summer after staffing's done. That could create a, a bit of a problem where you thought you were pretty good to, to start with. And that can make a big difference. But I, I think class size with the, you know, now with SRR3, that will help us. It's just, you know, that's a, that's a two-year September of 2024 that gets exhausted. But yet, you know, that moving from a 1% for capital for maintenance to just even a 3% would be a tremendous help. So then we can use that operationally for, for other things that we weren't able to afford before. So.
And a couple of things too that I kind of, as I'm listening to you talk, you know, what are we going to get? I think we'll be able to articulate that with the help of, once we have narrowed down the question and the amount. That's where our construction managers, Mark and Johnson will help us with because they can show like, here's what it looks like today. I'm thinking capital specifically, right? So here's what it looks like today and here's what it could look like if the referendum is successful. So I think right now, some of what you're craving is some of that piece that we don't know, we'll, we'll be able to articulate. So the tech ed piece specifically, like I know that that area is underspaced. So we have equipment that we aren't able to use because we don't have all of the right things that we need. So I think you're right. I think we need to be able to articulate that and tell it. But I think we need a little bit more definitive answers as to what exactly. And I think that'll come with a little bit more time, but I think you're right. We will need to articulate that. And then I think the other thing I wanted to go back to was, you know, the 80%. The 80.6% for Roosevelt's and for Meadowview. So we also need to take into consideration Roosevelt's capacity of a two-section is 316 versus the capacity of Meadowview of 474. So again, going back to that two versus three sections. So yep, the, the percentages are very close, but in reality they're not because we have to look at that capacity. And that's where the two-section versus the three or the four. And that is one of Demo and Trends guiding principles that they're looking at. You know, they have that list of guiding principles that they kind of put all of their decisions around. And that is one of them that is looked at, kind of as Commissioner Lyons said, as and that is one of them that is looked at, kind of as Commissioner Lyons said as well. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, um, so they have 62 seats available based upon the May projections, where Meadowview's got 92. So you do see that difference in the number of seats because it comes back to that capacity of a three versus a two-section.
Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I, I, I just would like to, you know, as being voluntold to be on budget and do our command, it, it's, it's been a, 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 a learning process, very, very informative. And I, however, what I also knew, I think the, the cautionary tale, I think to Commissioner Sir, Dr. Farrar, his comment about the, the equitable, the equity piece that, that appears appeared. I, I, for me, the, the utopian idea of equity becomes masked in the realities of the, the, the financial capabilities of an institution. And I, 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 I would, I, I, I would argue then that, as I've been saying for a while here, that, uh, beginning with this particular referendum and, and, and moving forward, that, uh, that story of, uh, in the ever attempt to actually get to that utopian idea of equity, we need to have recurring referendums to, 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 to get to that. And are, uh, look and be more strategic about the development of, uh, public and private partnerships to kind of offset the, uh, the, the financial, uh, borders where we are. The other, the, the other realities, you know, when you ask for long-term projections, there will be, there will be growth in certain parts of the city and there will be reductions in populations in other parts of the city. And how do we potentially manage? You know, I, I, I would, I would also see in, in where I would, where I would struggle with, even though I know the needs of actually one of the schools that are in green, it, it, it would be, it'd be very, it's very difficult to, on an equity argument, everyone should get funded. But let's say one of those schools were green, I don't know, what, what, what would be the next shade if it goes to 40% population? Or have that really dark green? I don't know.
No.
Or, 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 it's just, but it's, it, 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 so it's, it's this idea of, it's based on this premise of the efficiency of a space. Absence of, that we still actually have students in each one of those buildings that actually deserve their own individual educational experience that's benefi- beneficial to them. So for, for me, that's really, that's, that's really that story to tell. So for us to get to that, that equitable model, what, what funding do we have available to us? And, you know, if, um, there are probably, uh, more people in tune on, uh, you know, as board members to be able to, to really look at that. But right now, you know, it's referendum. What else do we have, right? Or that, you know, as Superintendent Johnson talked about, being able to, how do we increase that, move that percentage to 1 to 3%? Having those particular conversations, what has to be. So it's really, it's, uh, it's, and it's been a learning experience for me and I, and I, and I know, uh, an overarching goal of ours is to do that, but when you, I, you know, it's kind of, how do we stay charging towards there when we're masked with a, because, you know, when we look at these numbers, we will see the actual dollar amount. And I, and I, and I guess what I would recommend, Abby, if you could, when we, after we get the, the, the survey information, we bring back the dollar amounts, what I would ask, even though it may not, well, I guess we'll have to talk pause, but if you see the full number, now, we won't be receiving at a billion dollars, right? But, uh, it's, it's a difficult number to potentially stomach and sell regardless of how good the story is. And I'm a hell of a storyteller. It, it, it's, it's, it's a difficult number to, to swallow it at, 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 at one particular time. Thank you.
So before we, you know, good, um, and then Dr. Beekah, I'll ask if you have anything that you'd like to add, but we'll go to Commissioner Clemens and then Dr. Beekah, give you a chance and then we'll move to our, our debrief because we are running short on time.
Thank you. So, um, I think hidden, and we talked about facility condition. So like, the colors that are there are just, as everyone knows, they're just, what's the capacity to handle students, not the condition of the facility? Because some of those ones that are in green, you know, the condition may not be, green is good, you know? But also, uh, I think what, what we can do, what we need to do geographically, which we can't see in the spreadsheet, is where are these facilities? Because if we start having excess capacity in places, we have the ability to try to modify geographies within reason. We've done that a few times in the past several years. Um, I think what it becomes difficult when you have entire areas of the city where you're seeing stagnant or, or decreased student population, like we're seeing on the northeast side and some areas where we have multiple schools that are nearby each other that are, that, that are in that green, then it becomes a little more difficult to, you know, to make, to make those geographies work. But the, but the other is, we're talking about capacity in our existing schools and where we may need to add capacity. But the other is addressing the equity question is where should we be putting new capacity to be addressing those persons, those populations who are most in need? And that may not be reflective in, in what those existing facility capacities are, because this also doesn't take into consideration, some of these, these district geographies are relatively compact and many of them are not relatively compact. And so you look at where the school is in their geography and they're on the edge. And so they're actually drawing students from very far in one direction, but maybe only a couple of blocks to the other. So there, there's more to the story than just what the spreadsheet tells. The other is, and this is a very brief story because I know we're running out of time, but I lived in Dubuque, Iowa for two years where the student needs are profound compared to here. And what, what the district did there several years before I was there is when they needed to add a new facility, they didn't just build it out on the edge of town where all the new growth was happening. They, they built it downtown where all the need was. And, and, you know, they have, um, some very high need neighborhoods in their near downtown that, um, you know, Eau Claire is an older, is an older city. Uh, Dubuque's like 100 years older than, than Eau Claire. So they, they have neighborhoods where, you know, the new houses are in the 1850s. And, but that's where they built their newest school because they're like, this is where the need is. These kids deserve the best facility we can give them and we want to make for sure that that is not the barrier because they have plenty of other barriers. And so I want to make sure that as we're looking at what facility needs to be invested in, it's not just which ones are in the poorest condition. It's where does the population really need the most? We haven't really had that conversation exactly. That may be unfortunately a luxury conversation based upon how much need there is everywhere. But, you know, we don't see the, the percentage of students that are free and reduced lunch as one indicator. For example, we don't see median, um, home value i- in these figures. We don't see owner versus renter, which is often a proxy for household wealth. So, you know, those are some other numbers I'd like to see in terms of where are we investing these resources? We've talked a little bit about where growth is happening. I think that's really important because that stretches the boundaries and causes, you know, at least the capacity to get stressed. But when new housing is being created, it's usually not new households which need more attention. You know, it, it's usually middle to higher income development that's occurring. So, um, some of the places that are maybe stagnant in po- in student population may be the places that need the investment more, uh, because of the population they're serving. And this is a, something to look into as we dive deeper into the referendum.
Dr. Beekah, is there anything you'd like?
Much, I guess, I, a bunch of the same things you were thinking. I mean, I, I see a district is extremely fluid. So this is what, these are the facilities we have now, but they're not the facilities we're going to have in the future. You know, and so for me, um, the fluidity comes from, I mean, my sibling, we didn't attend any of the same schools because you change your boundaries as your population shifts. My elementary and my high school have now both been closed and are demolished because population, only my middle school, when the population shifts. So you close your schools and you, you move them where you need them. So I don't know if you keep that kind of fluidity in mind.
Thank you, Abby. Thank you to the Budget Development Committee for all the extra work that you've put in, helping bring this forward. Hopefully that's at least some information to work on next couple of weeks as we wait. But the survey, I think, right, Commissioner Lyons, the survey will provide us, you know, if we get very positive results. And I, last time, I think the board clearly did not push far enough past the prediction because the, the margin was quite large. We could, they could have gone larger than the 95 cents. But it's going to give us at least a baseline or something to start talking about. So at this time, we'll move on to our board debrief. Something that we, well, as a board tonight, something we need to work on. Dr. Farrar, you were the third member of Agenda Setting and so you are set to call out names at the very least in whatever order you choose.
Commissioner Sir, oh boy, why do I always have to go first? Board seat number one, that's why. Uh, no, I don't really have like big ahas from tonight, I guess. I think that this being my, you know, first referendum, I guess, it, it feels a bit overwhelming. You know, it's a huge part of our responsibility and our responsibility to commit. You just want to do the right thing. So it, it just feels such a big thing and such big numbers and such big projects. So I'm, I'm just struggling on what's the best way to walk through this, you know? She's a young board and not a lot of institutional knowledge with it. Were any of you here in the referendum? No? That's all I got, really. Commissioner Lyons.
Well, Commissioner Beekah and I interviewed, uh, many excellent students for the, the board positions and really happy to have the, the two that we introduced tonight join us. They're, they're going to be a strong addition to the board. I think that we did that well. I, um, you know, a short month ago, maybe even two months ago, didn't feel really confident in where we were in the referendum. I do, I am now, so, um, I, I, I feel good about where we're at. I would tell Abby that was a nice job from the other presentation. I, I do know that I've given two positives and that's the negative is that I didn't follow the rules tonight. Two positives instead of something could have done better. So I'll work on that next time.
Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, what we did, well, I think the, the promoting of the two student representatives from Northam Memorial, you know, I think, uh, hearing, um, their expectations of being student representatives, uh, yeah, that's a lot of pressure on us that we ensure that experience, because someone comes to fruition. I, 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 I hope that actually happens for both of them, but I, I, I look forward to their, uh, their feedback and their comments, things that we can work well. And, and, and as a governance officer, I probably should know. I, 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 I would like at some point in time, so, as, as, as a group, uh, that we, uh, talk about how we can, um, reimagine and reaffirm whatever the original or initial intention, uh, intentions were of, of the comment. You know, I think for me, when we talk about, uh, when we talk about equity and we talk about, voices of a community being heard at some point in time, that's something that I think we could potentially, uh, uh, do a little bit better is kind of how we deliver that. Thank you.
If you would add a comment, if it's not already on the, the ongoing policy. It is already, okay, then can you make a note so I don't forget it tomorrow in Agenda Setting? That maybe we, um, write a pencil in the next, you know, policy, extra policy work session? Like the soft date or, you know, plan out a doodle type poll to get people's availability. Thank you, Jennifer.
Right ahead.
So I am, uh, also excited about our new student members and I think something that one of us has done well as a board member is Dr. Beekah already reaching out and really helping to advance the way that we're interacting with them. So I look forward to working with you along with the students over this next year, but thank you for that extra effort. I also appreciate the different viewpoints that we were able to get out tonight as we talked through this referendum and seeing, um, maybe difficult questions or aspirational questions. For me, Roosevelt is the, the next one, the, the first one that wasn't mentioned tonight in terms of what needs to be done. But maybe we get a better sense that, you know, and, and I do think we need to extend and be bold in this. And so maybe that's something that comes there or, you know, your comments, Commissioner Clemens on, you know, maybe we need to invest where there's more need. I think just being able to have that conversation and being able to use this, the model that we have, start with, have to be able to work on these things specifically and have some extended time. I look forward to next time with our, coming back and, you know, talking more about our communication plan. So I think that's something that, that we're, I was, I was glad. And I think, um, you know, we're going to have to keep working on digging into these questions. We have a, you know, a very limited runway at this point. You know, we're two, what, eight, 10 weeks out maybe from having the vote or in, you know, April or an August 22nd emergency session. Nine weeks from having to have this question together. And so we are going to have to, you know, it's going to be a time of increased activity or at least input and, and thinking about it as we develop. So I think that's something that we are going to be challenged by the rest of this.
Thanks so much to Abby Johnson for all the effort that went into developing that presentation. And I more have a request. I'm wondering of the, so the conference that you all attended about coherent governance, I'm wondering if there's a way, I, I feel like we might be missing an opportunity to hear more from you about even if they recommended some things that we should all be doing or of what feeling you got about, you know, how would we evaluate our progress so far? And it's what you might have heard at the conference. I'd love to hear more about that.
Commissioner Clemens.
Well, I think this is, again, similar to our previous meeting, a little different where we were more in dialogue on a particular topic rather than working through some heavy evaluation items. I think that there's, as, um, as our DOD mentioned, we have a short runway and a lot to consider and, um, I, I know that we're only going to be able to peel back the onion, onion so far and focus on a few things. We're not really going to be able to dive as deeply as we may like in all areas. And I think we just have to, to, you know, live with that and identify where our priorities are in terms of how it informs the referendum question. I think that's what we have to focus on is the question. But we don't necessarily have to know what every, what every penny is going to be going for at this point. We just need to know, um, how much do we need in, in, at least in the short term? Where's, where is it going to go? And, and making sure that we're doing best by our students and staff and effort, resourcing themselves. But looking forward to it. I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions that we've only really examined in depth when it has come to talking about the referendum. You know, we often don't, when we're talking about, um, performance and metrics and academic, um, activities, we don't really get into some of these, you know, spatial and physical things that are happening in our buildings. And considering that's where our students and staff actually spend their time, I think it's really important, um, that we really dwell on that in the conditions of our facilities and how that is either enabling or has potentially barriers for certain types of learning activities. So I think, you know, it's good that we're, we're diving. So I think, you know, it's good that we're we're diving in deeply right now and I only regret that we don't perhaps do that a little bit more regularly.
I'll conclude with some similar comments that I really appreciated Abby's presentation this evening and I appreciated everybody's discussion. I feel like there was a lot to learn from that presentation as well as from our our interactions in relation to it. I think that where we can improve is connecting that information to both the vision for the district and to a discourse of storytelling that will help us to advocate in our community effectively for our students' needs.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn. Go move. Have a schedule for who gets the motion on these consent type items. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, adjourn.